From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Chuckston Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting will convene momentarily.
Board, we convene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Morning, everybody. We're going to kick off this morning's meeting with a salute to the flag led by our famous Director of POCS and Recreation, Mr. Bob LaRue. After the salute, please remain standing for a moment of silence, prayer, or meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. LaRue. Okay, we'll start this morning with a review of the consent agenda. All items listed with a CA above the item number are considered to be routine, non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion of no member of the board or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussions are desired by anybody, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence, with an opportunity for any member of the public to address or the board concerning the item before action is taken. Reviewing the agenda, items under resolution of proclamation, items one and two, appointments four and five, departmental requests, aging and adult services, items eight, animal services, nine, audit controller, county clerk, is 11 through 13, clerk of the board is 14 through 19, county administration office has nothing, employees training resources has 21 through 23, fire department has 25, mental health services 27, POCS and Rec Department is 28 to 29, probation is 30 through 34, public health services 35 through 36. Any member of the public who should pull any item off the consent agenda. Yes, sir.
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine. I am Fox. Anybody else? Seeing none, bring it back to the board.
Motion on consent?
Sir. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Great, brings us to item number three, proclaim November 14th to 20th, 2016 as National Apprenticeship Week in Kern County. Supervisor Perez.
Motion on proclamation?
Sir. Cast your votes.
Come on forward, please. Welcome. Good morning Chairman Gleason and members of the board. The issue of workforce quality is one that has taken front and center stage here in Kern County due to an incredible and remarkable partnership with many folks in this community, private sector, government, our own taxpayers' association, that have come forward to determine how best can we really meet the needs of our growing and changing economy and how do we listen to and partner with our private sector folks to understand what our workforce needs, how do we improve our workforce, and how do we improve our economy in so doing? Part of that research, investment, and discovery has involved us learning that one of the major skills gap in America today is the internship and apprenticeship lacking that used to be part and parcel of the American education system. We incredibly lack this reality and possibility within our traditional school structure, and it is very few entities that continue to provide the high-level, high-quality training that we know so many employers are so desperate for within the American workforce. So it is within that vein that today is remarkable, special, and an incredible privilege to me because I have learned so much through this process, and I am so grateful for the partners in this community who are working tirelessly to improve the quality of our workforce. Joined today by Teresa Hitchcock, Mr. John Spalding, I have an opportunity to address this board, but it really is a privilege of mine to make this proclamation, November 14th to the 20th, as National Apprenticeship Week in Kern County. This is the second annual National Apprenticeship Week, and it was designed for our building trades unions to showcase their remarkable and unparalleled programs and curriculum as one of the greatest educational success stories in the history of the United States by highlighting the dedication and investment U.S. employers and labor organizations have given to support registered apprenticeship. These apprenticeships are assisting in addressing the skills gap the U.S. has in its workforce and are helping many Americans overcome multiple socioeconomic challenges through mentoring and hands-on training. In addition, our building trades has founded a program called Helmets to Hard Hats to benefit retired and transitioning active-duty military service members with skilled training for quality career opportunities. By combining industry-standard technical instructions with structured on-the-job learning, they have offered a truly unique opportunity for Kern County's workforce. On behalf of the Kern County Board of Supervisors, I would like to thank personally my friend and great investor in Kern County, Mr. John Spalding, for his commitment to apprenticeship programs in Kern County. Chairman and members of the board, I am honored to join you today as we proclaim November 14th to the 20th, 2016, National Apprenticeship Week in Kern County. Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim November 14th to the 20th as National Apprenticeship Week in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into the official board minutes. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Laura's yours.
Real briefly, as Secretary John Spalding, Executive Secretary of the Building Trades here in Kern County, on behalf of Kern County Building Trades, we are extremely pleased to receive this proclamation. We're extremely proud to celebrate National Apprenticeship Week, and across the nation, I can tell you that all building trades across the nation are doing this. We have not done this before. This is the second one, as you heard, and we kind of missed the boat, if you will. Last time, we joined in with Fresno and did the first, but we didn't think about doing it here. We are privileged this year to be able to partner with the Kern Community College District and also the California State Department of Apprenticeship Standards. I have with me Karina Pereira, and she and Dave Teasdale with Kern Community College have put together a two-day, if you will, a two-day event. Annual Kern County Women in Trades Workshop. Tomorrow, on the 16th, we'll have approximately 170 young women from high schools around the county who will be coming to the IBW Training Center to learn about construction apprenticeship. And we, as a state building trades, as a partner in the state building trades, celebrate women in construction yearly, and this year, the women in construction moved, what started with our idea, moved to Chicago, so it's become a national event. Women in construction are real, they are a vibrant part of our industry, and we continually recruit them. So we think that this event tomorrow and Thursday, which will have kind of a mixed group, if you will, men and women, and we think this will raise the awareness of apprenticeship. And what I'd like to do now is to invite Karina to come, give you a little bit of the state perspective of apprenticeship in Kern County. Karina?
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Karina Pereira. I work for the Department of Industrial Relations for the state, and I'm in the Division of Apprenticeship Standards. And I'm here today to represent our division and our department to say thank you to Kern County for this proclamation this morning. This is a really great thing for your county. In the state of California right now, we have 74,000 apprentices that are actively in apprenticeship programs, and this is not only in construction, but manufacturing, healthcare, information technology, and many other career fields that are skilled, in our skilled workforce that are being developed for those future careers. Here in Kern County, we have 1,084 active apprentices, and unfortunately, at this time, we have only 44 of those are women. So this event this week is to help to introduce young women in high schools to the construction trades so that we can try to build that number. Also, I've learned this morning that we have only nine veterans that are active apprentices at this time. Just in the last 23 months, some other data is that we have graduated and completed 416 apprentices to journey people, journey men and journey women in this county. So those are just some facts here, and we're just really pleased that we can grow the industry here and bring more women and veterans and more awareness to apprenticeship here. So I just want to thank you for what you've done here this morning because I think this is going to be a big part of bringing that awareness about.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
Are we reaching out to Eastern Kern?
Are we reaching out to Eastern Kern as far as the events that are happening this week? Yes, I believe so. So Kern Community College District has received Prop. 39 grant funds, and they're using that grant money to help to bring all of the high schools that they can here. Unfortunately, we had to turn some away. Amazingly, we had more young women trying to get to this event than we had the room for. Hopefully, this will grow in the future years as long as we have the grant funding to support it. But yes, we've reached all over and even into the rural areas. So there are some rural areas where we could not get those folks to send two buses, one for the Young Women's Day, which is Wednesday, and then we were having a co-ed day for Thursday. So some of those young women will be coming on buses with their male counterparts on Thursday, but we're happy to have all of them. We could not unfortunately get everybody there that we'd hoped, but it's definitely a great turnout.
Thank you.
Lot of interest, so thank you so much this morning for this opportunity.
Really good. Thank you, thank you. Teresa?
I just wanted to add that our collaboration in this county with the Workforce Investment Board and America's Job Center with Teresa Hitchcock has been invaluable in growing the awareness of our apprenticeship program and also of our building trades, and we very much appreciate that. And so Teresa, would you like to say something?
I would. Chairman Gleason, members of the board, we've been talking a lot about skills gaps within our workforce, and there's a lot of needs for training, and the apprenticeship program is just one example of what we're trying to do to address skills gaps. We have the Community College District, of course, as well, but they can't meet the need. 65% of jobs over the next few years will be, will need some additional training beyond high school. So it's going to take the Kern Community College District, it's going to take these apprenticeship programs, and everyone working together in order to increase the skills of our workforce in order to meet that need. So I'm really happy that we're developing these partnerships and these programs are proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll stand.
Lastly.
One last thing. I'd like to acknowledge we have Steve Gomez, Business Manager of the Plumbers and Steam Fitters, and we have Ron James, District Representative of the Operating Engineers in the crowd, if they'd like to stand so that you can see that the trades are very appreciative of this. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to number six, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter, not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to their statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question with clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or report staff, request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Speakers limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before you make your presentation. Any takers? Come on up.
Yes, my name is Teresa Perez, and in the month of, in the year of 96, February the 2nd, I had gotten off the aid. And as of February the 3rd of 96, the Bakersfield Police seized money, it was $10,900. Our car was contaminated with chemicals, and I believe that there was a, our car was contaminated, I believe, with law enforcement, put dope all over. And I feel I've been picked on because the Department of Healthcare Services Recovery Section is trying to make me pay $679.52. And my son's battle cancer, he's had tumors throughout his whole body. My kid's dad has a tumor on the side, it looks like the size of a cantaloupe, and we want our money back, and I ask that we stop being picked on.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be completely safe.
I have check steps and income tax, we've got $3,000. Another income tax check was $880. We had our cars crushed. I worked, my kid's dad worked, and I feel that we should be entitled to give back our $10,900.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm finished now.
Thank you very much for your comments, and we're going to take some of these actions, take some information, make some proper referrals for you. I know these are a lot of state issues that you're talking about, and the county board is not prepared to solve those issues, but we are going to get your information to...
But it's the county welfare that took the money.
Okay.
And they don't want to give it back. And I feel I've been picked on because last year was $6,000 they're trying to make me pay. I'm not working because I'm taking care of my son and my family, they have cancer. And now they're trying to, this year, they're trying to make me pay $679.52, which I'm not working right now. How are they going to squeeze this out of us?
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mary Bedard, registrar of voters. The Kern County Elections Division administered another successful election on November 8th, and I wanted to update you on the status of the canvas. Yesterday was the last day we could receive vote-by-mail ballots postmarked by Election Day, so we now have all the ballots in our office and are working through them, as are other counties in the state. The deadline for the official results is December 8th. This year, we had 642 precincts at 151 polling sites, we had 283 different ballot types. At last count, we had processed approximately 218,000 ballots and still have approximately 30,000 provisional and vote-by-mail ballots still to be processed. The elections website was updated last evening with the most recent vote counts. Although elections offices across the country are dealing with antiquated systems and equipment, Kern County has one of the most automated and up-to-date processes in California. The Elections Division programmers have been able to automate many of our internal processes, and we have the most state-of-the-art vote-counting equipment of any county in the state. We were able to purchase the newly-certified equipment last year with federal HAVA money, and there was no cost to the general fund. We had 2,200 volunteers working at the polls this election. All the time and effort put in by the election staff in 2015, recruiting volunteers, especially getting organizations to volunteer to staff polling sites through the Adopt a Poll Program, really paid off. I would like to thank the volunteers who get a small stipend but work a 16-hour day on Election Day, plus the time they spend before the election for training and setup. And I would especially like to thank the staff in the Elections Office who worked up to 23 hours on Election Day to handle any questions or issues that came up during the day and well into the night counting the ballots that came in from the polls. In October, after the grand jury toured the elections facility and learned about the process and security features built into it, the grand jury said the staff at the Elections Office deserve our respect and appreciation for the long hours they put in every election. There are many times staff members worked 14 straight days, putting in 12 to 14 hours per day. By the conclusion of the visit, the Kern County Grand Jury was confident in the accuracy and integrity of the election process here in Kern County. Robert Price, in his sound-off column in the Bakersfield Californian and talking about the election staff, said that he has found them to be meticulous and fiercely dedicated to their mission. I would like to second those thoughts. We have very talented and dedicated employees working in the Elections Division who take the responsibility to ensure the integrity of the election process very seriously, and I would like to acknowledge the work they do, not just on Election Day, but throughout the year. Thank you.
Please.
Ms. Bedard? I have a question for you. Thank you very much for coming and giving us the statement and the report. I wanted to ask you, in years past, when we've had elections, there have been updates that have been posted to the website either daily or every other day, et cetera. I heard from some folks throughout the week that were frustrated that the last update that was on the website until last night, which the website, I believe, was updated twice last night, was 4:00 in the morning on Wednesday morning after the election. So was there, was there, as my memory, first of all, is my memory correct that we've seen updates to the website more frequently in the week after the election? And if so, was there a reason why it was only updated election night and then not until last night?
Well, the primary reason would have been that there has been the change to that we no longer, the vote-by-mail ballots no longer have to be in by Election Day, and so we really didn't have all of the ballots in until yesterday. So we could have updated it, but we still wouldn't have even known whether, how many ballots we still had to do. So mostly, we've been concentrating our effort on processing the provisionals and the vote-by-mails just to try to get as accurate a count when we do get through them as we can.
Okay, okay, because I know that other counties, they were updating their websites, and that was what, you know, folks that were looking at races that maybe they were cross-jurisdictional as far as counties where you had, you know, an assembly seat or whatever, those running in different counties, they were updating. And so they were, they were obviously held by the same rules in regards to the absentees that they didn't have to be in by Election Day. So you...
I think it was more where we put our emphasis, to try to go through and update it. Our emphasis was more because with the provisionals and the vote-by-mail, with having to check the signatures, the process is simply different. I think, you know, could we, you know, we could look into updating next time more often. I think it was just where we put our priorities, and since even getting daily updates doesn't tell you anything because we still, as I say, we've still got 30,000 ballots to be processed. So, you know, yes, the daily updates are interesting, but they really aren't going to give you the whole story.
For those folks who are in small, local races where they're separated by four or five votes, those daily updates do make a difference because they can see what the trend is as the votes come in. You know, my first race for this seat, the votes were trickling in over the course of, I think, about three weeks or so, but, you know, you're always interested in looking at the trend. So I don't know that there's a wide swath of the public that is as interested as some of us are in, you know, watching those updates come in, but for a lot of folks that were out there that were either running themselves or were heavily invested in certain campaigns, I think having those updates every couple of days would have, would have been something that they would have liked to have seen. And so I appreciate you coming forward and giving us this synopsis of the election, but that's just something that I heard that I wanted you to be aware of, and I appreciate your answers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go away, Mary, I have some comments with that. On election night, my little anecdote is that on election night, we were having a potty up in Ridgecrest, a central location where all candidates, whoever was running for any race, was invited, so we all got this together. And one of your people, Ms. Karen Raze, proactively called up there and got us informed of the process, on staying logistics and getting the ballots from two hours away down across the mountains, and she was very helpful. So shout out to Karen Raze and your entire staff on you. Great job.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public presentations? Okay, we'll close public presentations, bring it back to the board. Ms. Maggert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Nilon, could you bring us some kind of a report about, apparently, we are in the process of considering changing the email service at the county? Could you let us know about that and what the implications will be to that? And I understand that one of them is a Google-based, one of them is a Microsoft-based potential platform that we might work from, and one of those is not supported by the court reporting system and the other is, and if we were to go in the direction of choosing the one that's not supported by the court reporting system, it would cause completely different systems to be ongoing, and it just seems to me that that could lead to additional cost to the taxpayer. So could somebody bring that back to us?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you know, before a conclusion is made, and then walk us through what the process will be as to how a conclusion will be drawn. Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Maggert, Supervisor Couch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to acknowledge, I'm sure he's going to speak later on a particular item, but that Mayor Hall is in the audience today, and I wanted to wish him well and welcome him to our meeting today. Good to see you.
Which is a great segue for me to announce that Mayor Hall is here, and he's going to, we're honored to have you, sir, and you're here to make a presentation.
Chairman Gleason, members of the board, I am Mayor Harvey Hall for the City of Bakersfield, and I'm joined this morning by my administrative assistant, Keith Turner, and I'd like to ask Bob LaRue to come forward, please. For the past eight years, I've had the opportunity to serve with Bob LaRue as he provided the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee with many opportunities of community service. And we all know that Bob soon will be retiring, and because of all his tireless work that he provided to efforts in the City of Bakersfield, beautification efforts, I thought it was important that I bring recognition today to Bob LaRue. He was named Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Volunteer of the Year in 2008. He was elected KBB Chairperson in January 2011. And, you know, there's an enormous amount of projects that Bob participated in, including the Great American Cleanup, the Mayor's Freeway Litter Cleanups, the Highway 99 Tree Planting Project, the Garsa Circle Beautification Project, Make a Difference Day, and the Litter It's Beneath Us campaign. I know that Bob provided all of these outstanding community service efforts because I served alongside him when many times we were picking up litter beneath the local freeways. And, you know, I'm just so happy to be here this morning, to be able to present to Bob LaRue in recognition of your extraordinary commitment and dedication in serving as a member of the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee 2008 to 2016, and it's dated this November 15, 2016. And I'd like to present a key to the city, to Bob LaRue, for his efforts with KBB. And I'd like to present a key to the city to Bob LaRue for his efforts with KBB.
Thank you so much. Fantastic. Very good.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. These surprise things need to stop, actually. I'm not very good if I'm not prepared, but I do want to say a few things about the mayor. The mayor has just been a fabulous mayor. I got to know him by serving on Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, and he truly has a servant's heart, which I think those of us in the public sector understand, that we're here to serve the public. And the mayor has been just a fantastic example. And I will say, considering his age, he did way more than most of us on the committee. It's just fantastic. So thank you to Mayor Hall. Really appreciate this recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing none, we'll move on to number 10. Auditor Controller, Ms. Bedard. This is a request approval of new classifications of Assistant Registrar of Voters and Chief Deputy Registrar of Voters, proposed addition of one Assistant Registrar of Voters and one Chief Deputy Registrar of Voters position in Budget Unit 1420, and the deletion of one Division Chief Elections and one Election Program Coordinator position in the Budget Unit 1420, effective March 1, 2017. Ms. Bedard.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to begin by updating you on the part of the elections reorganization your board approved in 2015. That consisted of creating election-specific job classifications and establishing a career path to assist with retention and succession planning. This has worked out very well, and I'd like to thank your board for approving that part of the reorganization last year. We were able to work with human resources to create test questions related specifically to knowledge and experience needed for elections. We now have several very capable and talented employees in our Election Process Clerk Series, and the newer employees did very well in handling their first presidential primary and general election cycle. We were also very fortunate for last week's election and still having our experienced management employees. Due to the large number of statewide propositions on the ballot, many other counties had to go to a two-card ballot. However, because of the extensive experience our elections management team has in ballot layout and design, we were able to keep ours to a single-card ballot. This saved us about $250,000 in ballot printing costs alone, not counting the extra cost for the sample ballot, postage for vote-by-mail ballots, and overtime costs to process the additional ballot cards that the other counties experienced. We are extremely fortunate to have these talented, dedicated management employees to oversee our election process and to train our new election employees. The item before you today is a request that you approve the rest of the elections reorganization, dealing with management employees. This is part of our ongoing evaluation of workload and staffing assignments throughout our office, including Auditor Controller, County Clerk, and Elections, in order to identify resources that can be made available to Auditor Controller heading into the implementation of a new HR payroll general ledger system, as well as to continue to address the retention and succession issues in elections. Currently, Auditor Controller provides IT and administrative support for County Clerk. My proposal is to move some of this support to Elections, with the two Elections Managers overseeing and coordinating the election staff's support for County Clerk. The additional duties being transferred to Elections will be reimbursed by County Clerk, which is fully funded by fees, with no net general fund cost. This will result in a net savings to the elections budget. The additional time freed up in Auditor Controller will allow flexibility for employees to work on the project implementation, and will be covered by BSI. The net effect on the general fund of shifting the County Clerk's support duties from Auditor to Elections, together with the proposed new classifications for Elections, results in a savings of approximately $8,400 this year for the general fund. Since every dollar saved by Elections goes to the general fund's bottom line, while any savings in Auditor only affects the amount of BSI used, not the general fund cost. The two new classifications more accurately reflect the responsibilities of these elections employees, as well as the additional duties being assigned to them. That concludes my remarks, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Bedard. If you grab a seat, you may have some questions, fire it. Okay, let's open the public for public comment. Anybody in the public wishing to make comment on this issue, item 10? Seeing none, I'll close the public here and bring it back to the board for comment consideration.
Motion approved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Sorry, I should have jumped in there faster. Ms. Bedard, could I ask a question about this? Dumb this down for me a little bit. It's two reclassifications of two existing positions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's two, in addition to that, it's two additions of positions we don't currently have.
No, it is basically replacing the two positions that we currently have, the Division Chief and the Program Coordinator, and replacing them with an Assistant Registrar of Voters and a Chief Deputy Registrar of Voters. So the classifications themselves move into a higher pay range, but because of the additional revenue that's going to be resulting from County Clerk reimbursing the election support activities, it is a net savings to the general fund.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. Moving on, we have item number 20 on the County Administrative Office. Proposed resolution approving documents and authorizing refunding of the County of Kern 2009 Certificates of Participation cap improvement projects and the issuance of the County of Kern's 2016 Refunding Certificates of Participation Series A.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Amy Espinoza from your county administrative office will handle this item.
Good morning, Chairman Gleason and members of the board. In 2009, the county issued certificates of participation to fund various transportation projects, including the Seventh Standard Road Corridor and three new facilities, County Fire Station 65, the Pine Mountain Fire Station, and the Information Technology Building. With the current interest rate environment in the municipal markets, the county can realize debt service savings of an estimated $9 to $10 million, net of cost of issuance, over the remaining life of the certificates, by advance refunding the 2009 Certificates of Participation at this time. The county's finance team has been working with the county's municipal financing consultant and disclosure council to assemble the required documentation to be able to market and price the refunding certificates the second week of December, in order to quickly take advantage of favorable interest rates. The 2009 Certificates of Participation were issued through Kern Asset Leasing Corporation, and on November 7, 2016, the corporation's board approved this proposed transaction. Upon your board's approval, the county's finance team will move forward with this refunding transaction. Therefore, it is recommended that your board approve and adopt the resolution before you, approving documents, authorizing the refunding of the County of Kern 2009 Certificates of Participation, authorizing the issuance of the County of Kern 2016 Refunding Certificates of Participation, and authorizing the chairman or any other member of the board in the absence of the chairman to sign all financing documents. This concludes my presentation, and I am available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. Let's open the public for your comments. Seeing none, I'll close the public here and bring it back to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
Your motion, second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Okay, moving on. Under the Fire Department, item number 24, Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Ordinance to Revise and Set Fees for Services Provided and Permits Issued by the Kern County Fire Department. Chief.
Chairman Gleason, members of the board, good morning. This item before you is the final step in a proposed ordinance to revise and set fees for the services provided by the Kern County Fire Department and the permits that we issue. Every three years, our California Fire Code is updated. The County of Kern then adopts this fire code, and it becomes effective in January. This afternoon's PM agenda, the fire code will be before your board for adoption. The proposed ordinance before you is to increase the current fee structure of the Kern County Fire Department, establish five new fees that are included in this new California Fire Code that we'll be adopting, and a revision to existing fees. The fees for the Fire Department cover mandated fire inspections. These are state-mandated inspections, where we go in and inspect a business to ensure when the public uses that business, the business is fire-safe. Fire and life safety, the prevention of fires, is the number-one priority for the Kern County Fire Department. The Fire Department also deals with planning, land use, and development issues. We have special permits. We have a very active construction permit division within the Fire Department, and that's everything from a single-family dwelling that has a residential fire sprinkler to large warehouses that serve industry and commerce in Kern County. The Fire Department also performs standby, primarily that's in regards to fireworks shows and Hollywood movie productions and commercials. Those are all over the county, and we provide fire safety whenever they're doing anything with fire explosions. Our current fee structure was established in 2006, and we have not been before your board to increase any of these fees. The proposed fee revision will bring these fees in line with the actual cost to perform all of our services. This is our base service, hourly rate, to go out and perform any of these specific functions. The only overtime cost associated with any of this would be if a contractor would like a weekend inspection in order to move his business, his construction project along, or our after-hours movie shoots or fireworks displays. We hired a consultant to do a time study, to perform, to review the performance of our fire prevention unit and how all of this works, and to make sure that what we brought before you today was in line to our actual cost. We do have some new fees that are a result of the new California Fire Code, again, that your board will be adopting this afternoon. This includes emergency responder radio coverage, electrified security gates and fences, stationary storage battery systems, a CO2 for beverage dispensing, that's new, and mobile fueling, which is a new service that is out there, where people actually come to your business or your home to put fuel in your car. So we're regulating that now. Our revised fees are in regards to our filming permits. The core of the fire prevention unit is these inspections of local businesses to ensure that they're fire-safe. These are state-mandated. We are going to keep that current fee at $90. Again, that fee was established in 2006. We've made a decision not to increase that fee. Again, fire safety, fire prevention for citizens is the most important thing. So we're going to leave that fee at $90, and that will cover our regular inspections that we go out and perform at businesses. Fire Department staff working with the Building Department held a series of public meetings and met with our key stakeholders to discuss the new fire code and the proposed fees. We listened and considered all public comments. There were no significant comments regarding this proposed fee increase. Today, the Fire Department is asking your board to open the hearing, receive public comment, close the hearing, waive the reading, and enact the proposed ordinance and refer implementation to the Fire Department. One last closing statement. This will generate an estimated annual revenue to the Fire Prevention Unit of the Fire Department of $230,000. That concludes my presentation. We're available for any questions your board may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. I don't see any immediate questions, so we'll open the public hearing and ask the public what they think. If the public has any comment on this fee structure, now's your time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to support the chief's recommendation. You'll notice that some of these are external fees and prevention, that the ordinary tax are over and above regular stuff that would be paid for by our taxes. Some of these are for outside entities, providing services for them, which would not be covered by local taxes. Therefore, I think you should, I support the chief's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Okay, I don't see anybody else coming forward, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for comment consideration. Okay, seeing nobody, I'll jump in, unless...
I was just going to move on staff's recommendation.
Okay, I just wanted to say something before that movement. So my understanding, to get this clear, is we haven't had a fee adjustment since 2006 on existing fees. So it's been 10 years. The fee adjustments that you're making covers your costs, and they're designed to cover your costs. The new fees they were adding are as a result of fee structure that has been mandated down to you from the state, adjusting fee schedules. So you're just moving that forward. And I guess that's it. That's all I cared about.
Chairman Gleason, yes to all your questions. We have not raised fees since we did our original fee structure back in 2006. We did add fees before, as new fees were brought forward in the California Fire Code. That's been our only change. This is to bring the new fees into the Fire Code and establish a fee structure. The basic service remains at $90, and the new Fire Code, the new fees will be adopted, and then our fees for service are a direct result of our time study that was performed.
Thank you, sir. I have no further questions.
A second, a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion? Did we get a motion?
I believe Supervisor Perez indicated that she was ready to make a motion.
Right, that's exactly what she did. Does that qualify for a motion?
I think it does. All right.
It does. And we have a second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you. Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. Brings us to item number 28. Request for appropriation of unanticipated revenue from Wildlife Resource Funds in the amount of $6,000 to plant trout at the Buena Vista Aquatic Recreation Area. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun. Let's do 26 first. Thank you very much, Supervisor Perez. Wait, that brings it to my attention, we're going to do item number 26, which is to request to employ retired county employee, Shalish Patel, MD, waiving the 180-day waiting period to provide a, to fill a critically-needed position as a contract employee to provide outpatient psychiatric services for the period expiring June 30, 2017, or 960 hours, whichever occurs first, effective November 15, 2016. Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Bill Walker, your Kern County Mental Health Director. For a second there, I thought I was going to be responding to something I didn't know about. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. So before you is the Mental Health Department's request to approve Dr. Patel to be hired as an independent contractor to provide telepsychiatric services to our county. In addition, we're asking for the waiving of the 180-day period so he can immediately provide these services. The Office of County Council and the CAO's office both concur with this recommendation. Let me go offline just for a second, kind of explain... Let me go offline just for a second, kind of explain how the world is changing. It is very difficult to hire psychiatrists these days, and our permanent psychiatrists are of the retirement age, and this particular psychiatrist is retiring, moved to Los Angeles where his adult children are in graduate school, and that's a great story. Only if we were to replace him with a temporary locum doctor, that would cost us upwards of $450,000 a year while we spend months to a year recruiting a psychiatrist. And the world is changing, and psychiatric services, we're using more and more teleservices. So we're not only asking for this approval, but I'm also using this as a moment to kind of educate the board on how we are becoming more effective and efficient in providing psychiatric services, especially to the outlying areas. Pete Carroll, when he was coach of USC, once said, "We don't want to be the best at doing something, we want to be the only ones doing something." So last week, we launched our telepsych virtual mobile evaluation team with the Sheriff's Department in East Kern, and we've already, we do a sequence of questions of each deputy who uses the teleservice. This allows a deputy to engage us in Bakersfield immediately, face-to-face, either for the client, the family, or for the deputy himself to get a consultation with us. The first two that occurred last week already have shown that it kept a deputy on the scene in their community versus transporting someone all the way to Bakersfield. And so our department is the only department, and our Sheriff's Department is the only Sheriff's Department, of the 58 counties that is using a virtual mobile crisis system, and we will be training the other counties probably within the next six months of how to do this in the rural areas. So I went offline just for a second to tell you how virtual services are really becoming a way of becoming very effective and efficient in our rural areas. Therefore, it is recommended that your board approve the request to rehire retired county employee Dr. Patel as an independent contractor from November 15, 2016 through June 30, 2017 in an amount not to exceed 144,000 or 960 hours, whichever occurs first, and authorize the chairman to sign. And I respectfully am open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Do you have a second and a half question, if I have? Any in the public wishing to make comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for consideration.
Remove approval.
We have a motion, a second. I'm not a big Pete Carroll fan, but I am a fan of yours. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Okay, brings us to item number 28, request for appropriation of unanticipated revenue from wildlife resource funds in the amount of $6,000 to plant trout at the Buena Vista Aquatic Recreation Area. Mr. LaRue, you want to kick us off on that?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Would you like me to handle just that first item?
Yes, please.
So we have before you a recommendation from our Commission of Wildlife Resources regarding a $6,000 amount to purchase trout for the Giant Trout Derby that we have out at the Buena Vista Aquatic Recreation Area that we've been doing for many years. It takes place right after the Taff Fishing Derby, and it generally goes November through March, or the first part of April. And due to the cost of trout because of the drought over the last few years, we have had to purchase trout all the way through Idaho. So last year, our department went to the commission and asked to help so we could continue to have additional plants, and they went to the commission again this year and asked for 6,000, which provides one additional plant out of the Buena Vista facility.
Thank you, Ms. LaRue. Ms. Fox, I believe you pull it off, or would you give a comment?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, what I'm commenting on here is something that's somewhat peripheral to this, and it is that the wildlife funds, which are half the fines that go to the state and half stay with the county, is to encourage justice of the pieces to find their buddies guilty. And it's been going quite a bit to the parks, and it's been a major funding source for parks throughout the state, not just here, but mainly to a great extent here. And I would like to see more concentration on wildlife, for wildlife. The commission does get stuff from the state Fish and Wildlife Commission, what they're coming up with, and what the, they get no feedback from this county. So it's too much concentration on parks, not enough on wildlife. When there is no constant, no feedback from this county, and no participation by this county and the state organization, they have their own little organization of wildlife agencies, and we don't participate, but we sure whine afterwards, like when the state commission sets rules, and it is also a legislative body per se, because it sets rules, it makes things endangered, and it lists these critters, and some of them are listed by people with weird agendas, and it wouldn't hurt to have some participation by the wildlife in it. And therefore, at this time, and there would be no personalities involved, that's why I'm bringing this up. You're looking at the Parks Department being maintained going over to General Services. I was thinking the wildlife portion, you may want to think of putting into, since it is a lot of state stuff, foisting, I don't know if it's foisting it onto Mr. Crowder, but putting that into government affairs. So that's an option, and I was just thinking, you might want to consider this when you're doing this. Either that or refocusing the Wildlife Commission itself. Thank you.
Interesting. Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Yeah.
Ms. LaRue.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a couple follow-ups to Mr. Fox's comments. First of all, the commission does not receive many requests from the public, so we have not recently, in the last few years, had an issue in terms of funding the entire requests that come to the commission. We generally get about 16,000 to 17,000 per year. That is some wildlife fines, and just to let you know, our park rangers also issue wildlife fines, whether it's out at Buena Vista, or Lake Mangard Park, or also up in the Lake Isabella area, so we are participatory in that process. The other thing that Mr. Fox talked about is interaction with the state. Our commission is only an advisory body to your Board of Supervisors. And lastly, he mentioned the concern about General Services, the Parks Division being under General Services. Again, it will still be a Parks Division, so I don't see that as an issue going forward. We will still have representation at the commission as an advisory. Currently, Brett Haney has been coming to all the Wildlife Commission meetings, the Park and Recreation Commission, and Heritage Commission meetings, so I do not see that process changing.
Thank you, Ms. LaRue. Anyone else who wants to make comment?
Can I go back?
Yeah, I suppose you can. Make it quick.
What are the, yeah, Dennis Fox again, and I was just going to say that I'd like to see more funding given to the commission, and that would be, since it is fines, if there's perhaps a greater concentration on wildlife, you might get more money from the court system, and not particularly, they've been quite upset about judges not giving to them, but the prosecutors using, well, we'll drop the fine if you plead guilty to this. There's also the problem that a lot of the big-time fines you're not going to get because the guys who are doing the grows don't have the money. That's where the big, I'm talking about big money. And that's what's kind of where I'm coming from, is grows, and that would be a nice one, and they have not been that enthused of, I can see, and it go to the, Bartolique Seymour, money to the commission. As you know, he can tell you how much they got, maybe enough to, it's not very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Mr. Chairman, a couple comments. I can tell you I've met with the Chief of Staff, I believe, I'm not sure if that's his title, Terry McNally, a couple times over the last few years regarding the two issues Mr. Fox has brought up. The judges do have discretion on fines, as I'm sure your board is aware of, and there's nothing that he can do, and there's nothing we can do in terms of the judge's discretion per the law. The second part is, he has gone through the actual formula when a fine goes to the court system, and how much is taken out for bailiff in the courtroom as an example, how much goes to the state, and how much actually comes back to our county. Again, that's a formula that is adopted through state law, not through our jurisdiction, so we have no control over that.
Thank you, Ms. LaRue. Okay, so we have opened the public hearing. We're closing the public hearing and bring it back to the board for consideration.
Remove the recommendations.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Brings us to item number 29, proposed funding request from California Department of Fish and Wildlife to investigate mountain lion ecology in the Tehaxby Mountains in an amount not to exceed $1,500. Mr. LaRue.
Yes, this was a request regarding a mountain lion study. This is similar to other requests that we've received, which is really one of the main missions of the commission, is propagation of wildlife, so that meets the standard. The individual came to the meeting, requested this, it is new for our commission, we haven't had this type of request with mountain lions, but we've had many numerous requests with other types of wildlife, so this meets the criteria, and our commission voted to move forward with the $1,500 request.
Thank you, sir. Let's open the public hearing. Mr. Fox.
Once again, this is mainly, is more of an FYI stuff, you know, and I'd like to give you a caution on the mountain lions. Mountain lions are a poster child for parks. There was a proposition, a buy-in initiative, Mr. Jerry Merrill, and he's working on another one. You give him a few million dollars, he gets environmentally concerned people to bug you with, signed the initiative at the multiplex, gets it on the ballot, and gets it passed. Through this, $28 million was taken to wild, from wildlife, the stuff that comes from the offshore oil, the Wildlife Conservation Board, and sent to Santa Monica, and some more few millions every year was given to San Jose. And these buy-in initiatives have had an interesting impact, buying parks and saving the mountain lions in Santa Monica. UCLA did a study on this, on the results. They found out the places really overstocked with these apex predators. So what did the mountain lions do? They ate off middle management, you know, your foxes and weasels and stuff, and they have now a excess of rodents that normally eat them. So the parks came in and they built these buildings, and they're starting to tip over because the crown squirrels like to burrow under them. And there's another main thing, that is antivirus and plague, then rabies, because it's way natural to get critters back into norm, is epidemics, which transfer. So I see this as a little bit of a health and safety issue. Now, at Tohone, you know, you city, and the water agency, and you are being sued all the time by the outfit out Tucson, Center for Biological Perversity, and they want a park. They want, I've tried them in getting Tohone Ranch as a park, and 50, 60,000 acres up there, and I would like to make sure that this is not another thing that they're wanting at the park. It wasn't explained exactly what the object was, so I'm, maybe a little bit of paranoia, but as Henry Kissinger used to say, "Sometimes even paranoics are right." And what I was going to say is, watch that we don't have a problem with the parks, the overrunning of the problems with the imbalance of nature up there from this, and also, and gen mainly, the tax loss to the county. That's what I was, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. LaRue, can I comment on that?
My comments are that I am unfamiliar with Mr. Fox's comments regarding a mountain lion initiative. Again, if this is something that happened at the state level, then our commission, as well as our Board of Supervisors, does not have jurisdiction.
Great, well, just glad you're aware of his comments because they could have value, and you're part of an advisory board that can advise appropriately. Thank you very much. Public hearing is open? Public hearing is closed. Bring it back to the board for comment consideration.
Remove the recommendations.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
That brings us to adjourned closed session. I have a motion for that.
Motion.
Done.